Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would like to call the regular city council meeting for July 5th, 2022 to order. Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Thank you. Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Vizcara?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Protem Mann?
Here.
Mayor Sternquist is absent.
Motion to excuse Mayor Sternquist?
Sir.
All right, we have a motion to excuse Mayor Sternquist. If there are no objections, that will be so moved. Next, we have the invocation. It's tonight, I will be leading the invocation, if everyone may please rise.
Dear Lord, we are gathered here today to prepare to discuss and handle this business of the city. With all the tragedies and things that are going on in the world today, we ask that you protect those and bless those who have been affected. As we also ask you to protect our first responders, those working in the healthcare industry, and everyone else who has been fighting this pandemic for over, for more than two years. We ask that you safeguard all residents and constituents of Temple City as we look forward to a new fiscal year where hopefully we can build upon everything that we have worked so hard for so many years. And Lord, finally, we ask that you give us the guy, you give us, share us with your grace in guiding us through all the business that we conduct today and onward. And in Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
And tonight, I'd like to ask Deputy Bowie to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Can everybody face the flag, raise your hand, ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we move on to ceremonial matters. Today, we have, we have an adoption of resolution confirming the appointments to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Planning Commission, and the Transportation and Public Safety Commission. And I'd like to first turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Brian Cook.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Mann, and members of the council. Before you is the resolutions adopting confirmation of two members for each of the commissions that we have. Today, several of the commissioners with some COVID issues are not able to attend today, so some of them will have to do that virtually with our city clerk. But two of our commissioners, Mr. Nimry and Mr. Low, are here as part of the Public Safety Commission. But we ask that you adopt each resolution. The city clerk will then virtually swear in Commissioners Taren, Haddad, Haddad, and O'Leary. And here today, again, is Commissioner Nimry and soon-to-be Commissioner Low.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Are there any questions from council before we proceed?
We need motions to, in seconds, to move these resolutions?
Yes, please.
That does correct, yeah. All right. Madam City Clerk, I have on here, it says, "Public comment." Is that part of the?
I think it's treated like a regular item for adoption for resolution, so that's why I put that in there for opportunity for comment.
Oh, I see, okay, thank you. I couldn't remember how we did it last, last time, but, well, if there's, since it is a resolution, I will open it for public comment if there are any. If there are none, I will close public comment and ready for a council motion.
Mr. Mayor Protem Mann, I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution Number 225606, confirming appointment of Jose Taren and Crystal Haddad to the Parks and Recreation Commission, with terms ending June 30th, 2023. And secondly, adopt Resolution Number 225607, confirm appointment of Tom O'Leary and Serge Haddad to the Planning Commission, with terms ending June 30th, 2023. Adopt Resolution Number 22-5608, confirm appointment of Osama Nimry and Zi Young Low, or Sunny Low, to the Transportation and Public Safety Commission, with terms ending June 30th, 2023. And request the city clerk administer the oath of office to the commissioners.
Sir.
All right, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any objections? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Vizcara? Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mann?
Yes. So, Madam City Clerk, if you could please administer the oath of office to our commissioners.
Thank you. If I could invite Commissioner Nimry and Commissioner Low to join me in the front.
And I also, on behalf of the city council, have certificates for both of our, whoa, our commissioners?
So, I don't remember ever getting a script. You guys, we had to, like, memorize what you just said.
That's a long one to remember.
Had a script to read from, that's easy, that's good for you. Congratulations.
Congratulations, thanks so much.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
All right, be safe. Did you want a picture with everybody or just the mayor? Yeah, Mayor Protem, let him stand with everybody. Good job, guys.
Thank you.
See you soon. Osama, how many years is this now?
Since 2010.
Wow, time flies, doesn't it?
2010.
2010, wow.
Thank you for your service.
Twelve years, thank you. And Madam City Clerk, for the commissioners that are not here, are we swearing them in remotely, or how does that work?
Yes, they're making arrangements with the clerk's office. Well, swear them in virtually and have them sign their oath of office certificate.
Okay, great, very good.
Before their first meeting in July.
Great, excellent, thank you. And thank you, both Commissioner Nimry and Commissioner Low, for being here with us today. As council, we always say commissioners are an extension of us, an extension of everything that we do here as council and as the city. So, we are very proud and appreciative of your willingness to dedicate your time to, to serve Temple City. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have the Parks and Recreation Month proclamation. So, I have the proclamation here, and July is Park and Recreation Month, and I will read this, read this proclamation. Whereas the Parks and Recre-- excuse me. Whereas Parks and Recreation promotes physical, emotional, and mental health and wellness through organized and self-directed fitness play and activity. And whereas Parks and Recreation creates memorable experiences through youth sports and enrichment activities, community centers and programs, senior services, adult fitness, special events, and beyond. And whereas Parks and Recreation strengthens community identity by providing facilities and services that reflect and celebrate community character, history, aesthetics, and landscape. And whereas Parks and Recreation supports safe, vibrant, attractive, progressive communities that make life better through positive alternatives offered in their recreational opportunities. And now, therefore, I, on behalf of Cynthia Sternquist, Mayor of the City of Temple City, do hereby proclaim July 2022 as Park and Recreation Month here in the City of Temple City, signed this 5th day of July 2022. And today, we have our Director of Parks and Recreation, Adam Matsumoto, here to receive the proclamation.
Only if we have to.
On behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department, we would like to thank Mayor Protem Mann and the city council for recognizing July as Parks and Recreation Month. For us in Parks and Recreation, this is a year of coming back to our traditional events and programs on-site. And that's what we, you know, really hope to offer the community for 2022. Our Campapalooza event, which is traditionally held in July, will be, again, taking place at Live Oak Park. We've already had, I believe, 60 to 70-plus reservations already for Campapalooza. Our concert series has returned in force for a full 10-week series. We have our summer camps back in place, our Sports Blitz camps back in place. And because we're now able to reopen our community center, we will again serve as a cooling center during those times of heat during the summer. So, we're just so excited to be back in person, to provide these services. And from the response we've been getting from the community, I think our residents have been waiting for this as well. So, we're really excited, and I think it just means so much more now, celebrating Parks and Recreation Month and being back in person, finally. Thank you.
In-N-Out Truck going to be at Campalooza?
Pardon me?
In-N-Out Truck going to be at Campalooza?
We actually have a different burger truck, because In-N-Out doesn't do fries, and we know how important fries are when we have our burgers. So, it's actually a different hamburger spot. It's called a Nex, I believe it's Nex Burger, but they can do French fries, so we wanted to have that.
I'll try it.
Great. And you said 60 to 70% Campapalooza?
Yes, we have 100 total spaces, and we were at between 60 and 70 spots already. So, we still have some spaces available for those families that would like to join us. But it's a great deal, not only do you get to camp out under the stars, you get dinner, breakfast as well, and then a movie in the park, and a lot of other activities for the family.
Great, thank you. And thanks for receiving the proclamation. All right, next, we move on to public comments on items not listed on the agenda. The city council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on this agenda. And the procedure to address the council is highlighted on the first page. Is there anyone who would like to address the city council at this time? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment. Next, we move on to consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion unless removed for further discussion. Is there any member of the city council that wants to remove or discuss any items?
Motion to approve consent calendar?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, may we have a, Madam City Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Vizcara? Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mann?
Yes. So, the consent calendar has been approved. We move on to item number eight, public hearing, there is none. Next, item number nine, unfinished business, there is none. New business, there is also none. And now, we move on to what everyone's been waiting for, update from our city manager.
Well, you're being extremely generous to me, Mayor Protem. That's not what's said in my house when I'm talking, but, okay. Any case, thank you to, I need to thank Brian Arizome, our sheriff's team, for the entire weekend of enforcement. I know fireworks are a tough order of business in the community, but we were out in force for three days. We did issue nine citations yesterday, one on Sunday as well, confiscated about 80 pounds. Did all that we could. Quite frankly, I don't think any more resources at this point will do anymore, but I do want to just thank the sheriff's team. Our reserve deputies were out as well over the, over the entire long holiday weekend. So, thank you to them going forward. In addition to, just to let you know, the San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership will be doing its annual legislative event in the City of San Gabriel soon, so all of our elected officials will be there. So, if any of you are interested, please let me know. I will be there as part of the board of the Economic Development Partnership as well. And there, as you know, the superintendent has left Temple City Unified. There is an interim superintendent, will be reaching out to her to make sure she knows who to contact on the city side for any issues going forward, so. And ours, as Mr. Matsumoto stated, our summer activities are in full force. Campapalooza coming back after a two-year absence. Our summer concert series is going forward and having, as usual, attendance increases as the summer goes along. So, things are, things are going well in the city. Obviously, with the COVID numbers that we're seeing, we have not seen an amendment to the public health order by Dr. Ferrer and the LA County Health Department. But if that does go into effect, we will make, as we have always throughout the entire pandemic, we will make sure to follow that order very diligently. Staff on site has all the abilities with testing and masking to do what they need to do. But obviously, we will await any amendments or adjustments to the public health order. Also, too, if you haven't had a chance, again, to get to Primrose Park for members of the public, and how well-used it is, it's quite amazing. And, and also, too, as Masato Matsumoto talked about, all four EV charging stations are back up and running. They are, look like they're heavily used. They have been free, but we will be coming back to you because there is a substantial cost to that. And a recovery of that cost seems to be appropriate. We'll just, we're going to get some accurate numbers to you after we get through the end of July here and come back to you with that. So, but across the board, if you look at the ChargePoint app, pretty much from about 6:00 till 10:00 at night, there's usually someone using at least one of those stations throughout the day. So, I think as the council--
6:00 AM?
6:00 AM till 10, till 10, 10:00 PM. So--
Are they available 24 hours?
No. So, they're, 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 they are available, and they are locked outside of the hours from six-- they're available from 6:00 AM till 10:00 PM, so.
Brian, I'm sorry, are they, are they pork chargers?
You're asking technical questions above my pay grade, so they would, Adam, Mr. Matsumoto would know.
The infrastructure, it's a level-two charger, so it's, it's a mid-level charger. So, you can get, you know, on, I think, a standard EV vehicle, you can get up to, I think, an 80% charge within a matter of two to three hours. So, it's, it's not quite like a Tesla supercharger level, but it is an upgraded from, you know, let's say, your standard level-one charger. So, so it is a nice amenity for the community.
Is that, is that the only place in the city we have these chargers now?
There is a charging station at the Temple Sheriff's Station. Sometimes it's intermittently--
Is that theirs or ours?
That's theirs, that's the county's.
But we don't have any other, or do we have any plans to maybe put some in? I know there was talk at one time to maybe putting some in at Live Oak Park, or--
We've looked at it, it's the, the easiest, the reason why we were able to do it at Primrose Park is because we were doing the undergrounding and all the electrical work, which made it much easier from a staging standpoint, from construction, to do it. It's a little bit more expensive when you're talking about upgrading circuits and, and the electrical load that's needed for infrastructure that's existing. So, but we will, we will come back to you because as part of the ARPA funding discussion, that is one kind of goal item that the federal government had, so we can come back to you with some of those. And we, we do need them for our plug-in hybrids that we have throughout our city vehicle fleet.
I'm surprised we don't have one at the yard.
That would be one, that would be one location we would look to. Live Oak Park also is a better location because we have several of our hybrid EV, EV plug-ins, vehicles at, at, at Live Oak Park as well. So, that would probably be the two locations that we would probably recommend first. That's it for my report, sir, that you were eagerly anticipating.
Yes, thank you. Now, speaking of EV charging stations, I know we've been talking a lot about ARPA and also the bipartisan infrastructure law. There may be, if I'm not mistaken, some kind of grant opportunities for that. I just don't know how applicable it would be for our facilities.
Yes.
So, if that's something we can look into.
Mayor Protem, Mayor Protem, Mayor Sternquist had that conversation with, also with Congresswoman Chu's staff as well, and we'll, we'll continue to follow up on that one.
Okay, great. Any other questions for Mr. Cook?
No, no, sir, thank you.
Okay. All right, next, we have an update from our city attorney. And today, we have the pleasure of having Ms. Stephanie Gutierrez subbing in for Mr. Greg Murphy, so welcome.
Yes, thank you. I actually do not have an update for you. Just wanted to thank you for having me and letting me step in in Greg's absence, but he should be back soon.
Stephanie is now our Planning Commission--
Is that right?
Correct? Yeah, so she'll, she's at all the Planning Commission.
Very good, very good. Well, we're glad to have you at the council meeting, and thank you for helping us out with the Planning Commission meetings. Yeah, keep, keep those commissioners in check, right? All right. Next, we have council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any? No? No? You know, speaking of this meeting, and also, Mr. Cook, you mentioning that we, the school district has a new interim superintendent. When we reach out, if you could also mention that the Standing Committee exists and is looking forward to meeting with her and the board committee members soon.
When was the last time we had a Standing Committee meeting? I know it's been a long time.
It's been quite a while, sir, but yes, Mayor Protem, I'll make sure to mention that.
I mean, I think maybe get one during the summer, maybe.
Yeah. We, we were supposed to have one April, but that, that obviously didn't happen, so.
The interim has already started.
Yeah, she's already there.
But I think, for me, I mean, the, the board members all live in and around Temple City, so unless there's some vacation time coming up, there's no reason why we can't meet with them. I know there's no school active right now, but I would like to see, maybe you can throw that into the hopper, too, about scheduling a Standing Committee meeting. I know Mayor Protem wouldn't mind doing it, so.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think we shouldn't lose track of that, because we, we were getting a good routine going. Even during the pandemic, we were able to still meet with them virtually. So, I mean, maybe we can even offer that.
Yeah, if they prefer doing that, I have no problem.
If that makes scheduling easier, I'm sure Councilmember Chavez and I would be more than happy to accommodate.
Will do, I'll express that to them.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Moving on to council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda, starting with Councilmember Vizcara. Thank you. Councilmember Yu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I, I too concur with Councilmember Vizcara. Yes, last night seemed to be kind of quiet, so I think it might be the good work of the city team and sheriff's team working together, because seemingly, the loud, loud stuff seems not to be happening as much. So, thank you for that. And second point is to, just to thank, actually, let me take this off. Thank Mr. Nimry, it's been 12 years. I mean, thank you for your service on, on, on the commission, and welcome, Mr. Low. Commissioner, I should say Commissioner Low, for serving on our Transportation and Public Safety Commission. Thank you for that.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Chavez?
Thank you. Osama, are you the longest-serving commissioner on that group now, or?
I'm the first commissioner, yes.
Okay, good, very good. So, we got the newbie and the oldie. Change, change to talk to each other about that. Thank you for doing that. I didn't realize it had been that long, time flies. Although, we've been on council since 2009, so that's kind of crazy. Well, I guess the fireworks depends on where you live. Because I did hear a lot last night, but they did cut off fairly earlier. Of course, you still have the, the once-in-awhile boom that you hear, but, you know, it's kind of infrequent, I think. And, you know, I don't know, there's probably a number of reasons for that. One, of course, is the fact that we do have people out on the streets now. And then also, I don't know, just maybe people are just getting tired of doing it or whatever, who knows? I did notice we had the lights on last night at the park. Was that to keep people off the park? I thought so. I was driving by, and all the lights were on, and I thought, why are all the lights on at Live Oak Park? And I think that's what discouraged people from lighting fireworks, so that was a good call. That was a good call, but, yeah, you know, it's every year we, we face that. And I've had several people, and I'm sure many of you have, to still question or ask about, well, when is Temple City going to ban fireworks? And, you know, it's, it's not an easy issue, as we all know. We've, we've looked at that many times over the years, and I'm sure we'll look at it again at some point. But, you know, it's obviously a big fundraiser for our youth organizations, and, you know, it seems to be these days, everything comes down to money, but, you know. Yeah, well, safety is on the other side, of course, and we want to make sure that that, that happens as well, so. So, yeah, there was, overall, I think it was a good outcome. Certainly, we can all remember a few years ago when it was more or less a battle zone in Temple City, and we seem to see that a little, a little less than that now, so. And, and Adam, I apologize, I haven't been able to get to a concert this, this summer, and I won't be there tomorrow night, but hopefully, after that, I'll be able to attend. It seems like everything happens on Wednesday nights. All the meetings are on Wednesday nights, or at least other meetings that we do. But I understand they've been very good turnouts, and so, good job. Express, you know, my wishes to you and your staff for, for continuing to do that. I know people certainly look forward to that, and it's one of the great things we do in Temple City, so. Thanks a lot for that. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, great. And I too want to just thank all city staff, as well as our sheriff's deputies, who did patrols for us over the weekend. I know just the sheer presence of being in and around the city is, serves as a deterrent. And we also have the, I think, the, what are those signs called, the ones we have on Las Tunas? Yeah, so we have some signage, and I, just anecdotally, from where, where I was, it was quiet compared to previous years, so I had a similar experience. I also noticed a lot of people were just out of town, at least my neighbors, friends, family. There just seemed to be a massive wave of vacations. Even my wife was commenting that traffic wasn't too bad for her on, on Fridays, so that was kind of interesting.
And even today, there was not a lot of traffic.
Today was, it was good? Yeah. So, so anyway, thank, thank you. We appreciate all the work that our dedicated sheriff's team does, as well as-- sheriff's team does, as well as our public safety supervisor and, and our code enforcement staff. So, thank you all. Next, we will recess to the successor agency, to the Temple City Community Development Agency meeting. Hold on. So, Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Agency Member Chavez?
Here.
Agency Member Viscara?
Here.
Agency Member Yu?
Here.
Vice Chairman?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move to excuse, Mr. Vice Chair, I would like to move to excuse our Chair, Chairwoman Sternquist, for cause.
All right. We have a motion and a second. There's no objections, so moved. Consent calendar? We have a motion for the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Agency Member Chavez?
Yes.
Agency Member Viscara?
Yes.
Agency Member Yu?
Yes.
Vice Chairman?
Yes. Unfinished business, there is none. New business, there is none. There is no communications. Anyone want to make a public comment on the successor agency item? Seeing no public comments, we'll close public comments. Update from Executive Director, Director and Agency Counsel?
None.
All right, none. Matters from Agency Members, none. And we are adjourned from the successor meeting. We return back to our regular city council meeting. We are at additional public comments on items not listed on the agenda. Or is there anyone who would like to comment? All right. Seeing none, then, public comments is closed, and we are adjourned for the evening. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.